You're interested in.
Yes, dear.
All right, so everybody got everybody in that. Okay, all righty, well, it's seven oh two, so we're going to call to order the November eighth Kensington Town Council meeting. And we will start with a moment of silence. Does anyone have anyone that they want to to lift up? I'm going to be somewhat vague on this because I don't have a lot of information, but if you ever went to Ellie's bookshop, there was a gentleman named Carl that liked to hang out in the shop. He wore a like a railroad cap and I ran into Ellie at the Urban Thrift Open House earlier this week or last week. And she let me know that Carl had passed away of cancer, so I don't know Carl that well, but he was kind of a fixture in Ellie's shop and out in front of the apartments with George and Alice and Ellie. And so I and so I just wanted to lift him up and and think about him. He will be missed, so. So we can just bow our heads for a minute. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Council, you received the town council minutes for October eighteenth. I believe there was just a small change that Connor had suggested adding a header and I believe a little format change, but otherwise there was no other changes to the minutes. Is that correct? Okay, if we can get a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll move to approve the minutes from the October Town Council meeting as amended.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we also had the closed session meeting minutes on October twenty first and I did not hear any changes to that. So if I can get a motion to approve those minutes.
Sure, I will move to approve the minutes from the closed session on October twenty first, twenty twenty one.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And I want to welcome back Councilmember Hill Zayat. Welcome, Bridgette. And for those who don't know, Bridgette's been on a maternity leave after having her little baby Maya, her little girl. So I know Maya somewhere in the background, somewhere waiting to be pricked with a needle or something so that she mom might have.
Rough day.
I bet. So anyway, so we hope Bridgette will be able to hang in there as long as she can. So anyway. All right, so let's move down to the to the mayor and town council. Just want to acknowledge that the town council did have a closed session on October twenty first, twenty twenty one. We met in a closed session in accordance with section three dash three oh five B seven of the general provisions article to consult with council to obtain legal advice. On number two, that is the audit committee report. I want to acknowledge receipt of the audit committee's report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Number three, the county redistricting commission. I've asked, this is an update on the redistricting map that the commission had recommended, which would move us from District One that we're currently in into District Four. I've asked Darren to start the conversation on that. Darren?
Yes, I'll just give a little background on it. I don't know how long it's been since we were in District One, but as a result of the the election last year, Montgomery County Council has expanded from five districts to seven with continuing to have four at-large districts. So the county council appointed a redistricting commission, which was tasked with dividing the county into seven parts instead of five parts. There were originally three maps presented by different redistricting commission members. All of them, you know, for they started from the premise that Gaithersburg and Rockville should be in one district. And the a couple of other thoughts were, don't make the western part of the county look weird. Don't like make it look gerrymandered. And then another principle that I heard, I sat in a mostly meeting was try to preserve Eastern Montgomery County as a voting block because it's a primarily a black area. And and they felt like by, you know, keeping it concentrated black, that it would have a greater chance of sending a a black council member to the county council. So once they did that, they were they were left with Tacoma Park and Silver Spring as one district. And then they, just because you're going from five to seven districts, you had to shrink the size of District One, which was used to be Bethesda, Silver Spring, Chevy Chase and us. And the way they seem to have done it was to say, well, we've got the Silver Spring District, the Silver Spring and Tacoma Park. And we're going to head up northwest and pick up as many people as we need to in order to create a relatively balanced district population wise. And so in the first couple of maps that were presented, it grabbed Chevy Chase View, Tacoma Park, I'm sorry, Garrett Park and Kensington. And then because they wanted to tweak the map a little bit to bring in more people into District One, which again was Bethesda, Chevy Chase, Potomac. They ended up in the final presentation of this map going all the way up to into North Bethesda. So my personal view is that Kensington shares almost nothing in common with Tacoma Park. And it's to me, it's weird when you look at the shape. It's weird when you consider, you know. Whereas we seem to have a lot in common with the the district as it goes down Connecticut Avenue. Just because of the nature of the metro, which is big U shape for the red line. You know, we just don't have that much in common with Tacoma Park. So I've pushed us to ask the county council if they're going to reopen this process, which they have every right to do under the under the law to consider, you know, is, does this make sense? Or is Kensington just being used as a bucket of people that they move where they need them in order to balance the population? So the county council, I don't remember the exact data, maybe somebody can give me a phone a friend help here. I think it's maybe the eighteenth is going to consider the the redistricting commission's report. They have ninety days to consider whether to redraw the lines themselves. I understand and when a similar prop was undertaken in Prince George's County, the county actually, the county council actually did come up with their own map. And so we just have to sort of decide what are what we would like to be, what are our common interests and what should we advocate for? Is that what you were looking for, Tracy?
Yes, and and I'd just add to that, that we have reached out to both Chevy Chase View and Garrett Park regarding what their thoughts are on this issue, because we do feel like if if we're going to ask them to redraw the map, that it would be better if the three municipalities would be together in asking for the same thing. So we have they've been, I know Chevy Chase View has appointed two elected officials to kind of look at the issue as and Garrett Park is meeting tonight. And they're planning on doing the same.
Yes.
So council members, you have any questions, Nate?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I think my my view is that I agree with Darren that I think there's not much we have in common with Tacoma Park. I was actually happier with the maps that put us together with Wheaton, because I think there's at least some connectivity with with that community. So, yeah, I think, you know, if we have to take the lesser of two evils, so to say, I would opt for one of the other maps that was already put forward, the other, one of the other two. But I think the other concern is more related to the the issue of Kengar. I know that Ann Lector posted this on the list serve last night. My same reaction is that right now Kengar isn't in our district. It's in District Four. But I see this as a pretty good opportunity to further strengthen ties with them. I mean, we're really pushing that connectivity, both in the racial justice committee and then also, you know, with with what we're doing, the pedestrian bicycling and safety access working group through engaging Kengar residents in, you know, their views on what we're doing for the for the study and the and the designation as a priority area area for bicycling and pedestrians. So I feel like this is, you know, granted, we were not a hundred percent sure of the views of the residents of Kengar, but from my interactions with residents of the community is that they want, they feel ties with Kensington. So I feel like between now and November, it'd be good to get the temperature more residents. And I think Ann said she was also reaching out. I'm reaching out to get a sense if we should be advocating for that, because I think it is an opportunity that would be missed if we didn't pursue it in this effort.
Okay, Connor, do you have any thoughts you want to share before we open it up?
No, I think my thoughts actually kind of dovetail and weave together with what Darren and Nate both said. Thinking about other large topics affecting, you know, that are county or state driven that affect the town. When we do outreach, I'm thinking thrive and attainable housing and traffic. It's largely Garrett Park, Chevy Chase View, the other Chevy Chases straight down Connecticut as Darren was talking about it. We talk to them all the time. We, you know, we exchange ideas frequently. We work on strategies together frequently. And that's why there's a cohesion along that Connecticut Avenue corridor. To our friends in Tacoma Park, you know, great community, but geographically and other things are so separated that even though they are municipality and we are municipality, very rarely do have I, you know, or the town really had to engage with them. I think there there is cohesion keeping us together where we are. And to Nate's point, I agree too. I would I would like, love to see the the bonds between Kengar and Kensington, including putting us in the same district just because of exactly where we are located and they are a part of our, you know, the greater Kensington area, but it all goes down to what Darren said. I feel like they had strong ideas for what they wanted on the east part of the county and strong ideas for what they want on the north part of the county with this overarching idea of Gaithersburg and Rockville. And so everything in the middle, us and Garrett Park and Kengar and Wheaton, we were all just pieces of population that got moved around in order to hit this magic number of, you know, roughly a hundred and fifty thousand residents in each of the the new districts. And so, you know, when you look at the shape of it being a bow tie and how it it just doesn't, I don't see the logic other than keeping Silver Spring and Tacoma Park gave them roughly a hundred thousand and they needed to find fifty more and they just kind of grabbed in the middle into the pile of of people left available to be reassigned. So.
It was my understanding the main reason for keeping Rockville and Gaithersburg together is because they both have their own zoning authority and they're huge, you know, acreage between the two. So the county wanted to keep them together to try to, I guess, manage it in one district versus having two districts. So that was what it was explained to me by one of the council members. So.
It's kind of always hard to work from the inside of the donut out.
True.
Because it all of a sudden put, you know, some land constraints around the rest of the way that these districts could be formed.
Yes, instead of doing kind of slices, yeah, you're having to go around. So. Bridgette, I don't know if you've had much time to follow this, but do you have any thoughts that you'd like to share?
I think it makes sense. I'm kind of curious what the Kengar folks would think, but everything Darren said makes total sense.
Okay. I know we, I have to say, I was completely, you know, because I had reached out to Andrew Friedson's office when we did the Summit Avenue Bridge. And I'm not even sure that they were realized that Kengar was not in their own district. So it was just, it's always been an assumption that we were in the same district. You know, you have to go to their address to find out that they're not or look at a map and I never thought I needed to look at a map. So I think having them, you know, whatever district we end up being in, whether it's still one or in four, I think bringing Kengar with Kensington is because we can help advocate much better for them. So is there, I know Karen, did you want to make any comments? Karen, are you still still on? Oh, dear.
Okay, I know I'm the past president of the Civic Association and I hope some other members were on the call. I don't know, but from what I've understood from residents, they still want to be with Kensington. We have a great history together and it makes no sense for us to be separated now. I guess that one time or another, we never really realized that we were in different districts. So what can we do to be with Kensington and Garrett Park? Because we're in between the two. So it makes sense that the rest of us, that we're with the rest of you.
Well, I guess what would make the most sense is that, and I know the Civic Association, since you left, Karen, has not been as strong as it once was when you were were leading it. And so if the residents of Kengar can, I know they still have a civic association, but if they feel that they have enough support, it would be good for them. Because we would certainly write a letter if that's a decision of the council to ask that, you know, we're probably going to ask for a couple of things, but one of the things that we would be asking would be for Kengar to be in the same district as the town. So I I don't think that's heavy lifting for the county council to to make that change. You're talking about a couple of hundred residents. I don't think that would be disruptive to their map as far as balancing, but we would, we would need guidance. You know, I don't think we should assume anything. So we really need guidance from the residents on what they want to do. So and and to assign somebody who could sign on to a letter as president of the Civic Association in Kengar.
Okay, so what I will do is go back to the listener and propose this to them. I really believe that the majority of the people are in favor of this. I'll propose about the letter and Mark Sorden, since he's the president of the Civic Association, I'll see if he will sign on to the letter. I talked to Matt earlier today and he said that there could possibly be a letter. We could see it first.
Of course.
Before it goes out. And I think me and myself, I think that's the way to go. We've always backed each other in a lot of things and we could, we should continue. They should continue to do the same thing.
Right.
Even though I'm not the president anymore, I'm still doing other things for them that they need because they're not stepping to the plate to do what needs to be done. So I will push this to them and I I really truly believe that they would agree to a letter with the town.
Okay.
In support.
I mean, the the major thing for for Kengar to its benefit is, you know, whatever county council person we end up with, you know, because of we're a municipality, we do have the larger voice. So and can help advocate for Kengar and, you know, in certain issues that they may be having. So I think that's the main benefit. I'm not sure. I think Nancy Navarro represents District Four and I I don't know whether she ever visited Kengar or not.
Well, she was when we had the Coalition of Civic Groups. She came once and then when they did the dedication of the community center, she came and to my knowledge, we've never really seen Nancy Navarro. So she, you know, I understand that you gentlemen you have in Area One is a good representative. So me and myself, I would go for that and that's what I would push for.
Okay.
To be with you all.
All right, well, it's, I don't. Are you, do you have anything else to add? I'll just reach out to other people if you.
No, well, do you have a deadline for the letter or when you need to know?
Well, the the council, I mean, I I don't want to second guess the council, but I think they're they're leaning towards at least writing a letter asking that Kengar be included in our district. That's how I feel that it's leaning from their discussion. So we would have to get, you know, we'll have to make a decision as soon as we finish. So if you can just hang on while we finish opening it up to other members of the public, then we'll we'll decide what we want to do once we've heard from everybody. So can you just hang in for a little bit longer?
Oh, sure. So sometimes I come to your meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we'll hang in there. Does anybody else want to speak on this topic? Don't see any hands. Am I seeing a hand? Oh, Joe?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mayor Furman. So what realistically can the town of Kensington do? I mean, this this gerrymandering seems to be pretty advanced and is there anything that that the town can do at this late stage? You mentioned, Mayor Furman, that you spoke to Friedson's office. Was there any? What was the reaction from those folks? And is there any, is there any hope of reversing this? Because it does, it does look very gerrymandered.
Well, he was not able to say what the entire council would do. He just indicated if this was a Zoom meeting that I was on with other municipalities in District One. And he was, he made the comment about why the commission wanted to keep Rockville and Gaithersburg together and gave that explanation. So, I mean, our personal view is that he should drop Potomac, because Potomac and then just bring the municipalities starting with Friendship Heights up and then, you know, take back Kensington, Garrett Park and Chevy Chase View and and now Kengar. And then, of course, it includes a bit of North Bethesda and the a bit of Kensington Heights as well. But he didn't, he didn't give any other explanation of what he planned to to do with the map.
And realistically, what do you think the town can, I mean, is there is there much or is it just too far advanced to make a difference now?
Well, I can, I can sort of.
You want to say that, Darren?
A little bit. I mean, we we haven't done nothing. We joined with the letter, the other downcounting municipalities, the Chevy Chases, Friendship Heights, arguing that because we have zoning authority, because we have a common interest in in this sector, that we should remain together. And then the draft maps kind of cut off Garrett Park, Chevy Chase View and Kensington. And so we came back with another letter saying, you know, this looks bad and and we didn't say bad, but you know, the just that we don't share anything in common with Tacoma Park. I I think that however the map ultimately is drawn, I would prefer and ask the council to support that the remaining three municipalities, Chevy Chase View, Garrett Park and Kensington stay together. And the reason for that is because, as we talked about, we do have separate zoning authority and and so there's a distinct interest apart from what the county council does. If one or more of us were to be drawn up into the Wheaton District, I'm fairly certain that that none of the other, there are no other municipalities in the Wheaton Glenmont District. And so I would rather have a county council member who is acclimated to the idea of there are things that county council should do and then there are things that municipalities have a maybe an additional role with. So I, as far as, you know, is it too late? I think the answer is, I don't know. I don't know the sense of the council. This is a big county of a million people. I don't know what other council, county council members have as far as concerns about their districts being redrawn. And so whether we get the county council to actually engage in its own map drawing to the point where it can get five of the nine members to support it, that that's what we're trying to assess right now.
Well, the redistricting map only, it was what, a six to five vote? So it wasn't even, I mean, not even close. So I think there was a lot of disagreement on the commission. I think my biggest thing about losing, you know, going out of District One is the fact that Andrew Friedson has been an excellent county council person. And he had, he represents the largest number of municipalities, understands them, works with them. And I really think we're going to lose that once you go into a larger area where there are fewer of the municipalities. And Kensington is probably, well, we're the largest of that group in District One as far as what, especially what we've got going on, may not be in population, but the, you know, we are businesses, we're housing, we're apartments. We've got all of that. All the other municipalities in District One don't have that.
Thanks, Mayor Furman. I agree with you. I think that Andrew Friedson has done a fine job as representing our district and you know, he's he's attuned to Kensington. He's he's aware of us and I think he would be great to to be retained. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I think we'd just be treated like basically an HOA or something. That's how most of the county council members would think of us. So is there anyone, John, did you have your hand up? John Gerson? Or was that Ann Lector?
I did not have my hand up.
Okay, Ann, you're, people switch around. I don't know why that happens.
But John's, John's putting some helpful comments in the.
I am reading those. Yes, go ahead, Ann, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Furman. I'm sorry, I joined late, so you may have already covered this. I was happy to hear that Karen Jackson joined the call. I had a few conversations with folks in Kengar who are also supportive of keeping, well, not keeping, but moving our communities into the same county council district, since we really are a very connected community with a long history. And I understand while I haven't had time to look into this closely, that before the latest version of districts were drawn, at one point we were together. So I I think there are a lot of good reasons to do that. And in terms of our representation with Andrew Friedson, I'm I'm certain this has probably already been mentioned, but that can also change. You know, we don't know that he would always be the District One representative. So I think we should.
Well, he'll term limit out eventually, so.
So we should not let that be an overriding consideration, but rather there may be other reasons that, you know, we have to consider Tacoma Park being a municipality that that like Kensington has the diverse business and residential community. It's obviously larger as a municipality than than maybe even some of the other ones that we're currently grouped with. So that's all I wanted to share, but I would support having the town advocate to to keep, to put Kengar and the town of Kensington in the same council district.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Okay. Anyone else in the audience have a question? Or wants to make a comment? Let's see, any hands? Council, so how do you want to move forward?
Yeah, I think we should put together a letter. I mean, I think the point in the chat John raises is important. We should probably agree on some sort of prioritization for what we think is the most important. And I would argue that it's staying with Kengar. The second being to probably disassociate our 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 district with with Tacoma Park and then trying to keep the other three municipalities together. I mean, just a proposal, but to me, those are the priorities.
Yeah.
The other two and three might be interchangeable.
Sure, but I I echo yours, Nate. Number one for me is bringing Kengar and and the town together into the same district, wherever that may be. But the second is is then trying to remain aligned to the, you know, the other municipalities around us and keep the municipalities as a whole grouped so that we can continue to work together.
Okay. Darren?
I, no, I tend to agree. I I I think. I, 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 I think though, what we're dealing with is a moving target. Meaning that um, you know, if the rest of the couns, county council decides to draw maps themselves, what they come up with could look very different from what we have now. And so I don't know that we can sort of lay out a strategy of, of, you know, just bringing Ken Gar into the Tacoma Park District or, or all of us into, you know, um, the old District One. I think, you know, my, I, I don't, I don't sense a common interest, like I said, with Wheaton and Glenmont. Because um, I, I don't think that there is actively engaged in sort of local control like Kensington is. And so my, if I had to prioritize, I would say, you know, move us back to the district that heavily contains municipalities. Two would be, you know, kind of preserve where we are now, which is in this district. And the, and the least optimal for me would be to, to go up to Wheaton-Glenmont, just because I feel like would be on our own swamp with a number of, of sort of unincorporated parts of municipality of Montgomery County. So I think the point that I'm trying to make is, I don't know that we can lay out a strategy other than we've got to get some intelligence from the council, county council of where they might be headed.
Okay, Bridgette, any other comments?
You're still muted.
And they're letting me unmute, sorry. This is an ongoing problem for me. I, I kind of agreed with Nate's suggestion. I think, you know, even if they don't listen to us, could at least ask for what we want, and then they can ignore us, right? I mean, what's the harm?
Yeah. Well, I know, um, you know, in the Tacoma, if you were to do, you know, grab Ken Gar, bring us into District Four, and you stay with Tacoma Park, Tacoma Park is a municipality. The, you know, the advantage of it's the third largest municipality in Montgomery County. So that alone, you know, while we may not have a lot in common as a municipality, you know, and, and someone who's, you know, has worked with them, you know, they have the same services that they provide that we do. They understand how they have the same uh, super majority um, clause that we have in planning. Um, so we do have a, we have a lot more in common with them than you think. And I, I think they are a, a force if we are banned together with the municipalities. So I think there is some advantage where Darren states that, well, we don't have any advantage with, you know, Glenmont and Kensington, I mean, Glenmont and Wheaton, because they're not municipalities. We do actually have that in common with Tacoma Park. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule them out, rule that out completely. So. So it sounds like we're definitely in agreement that we want to ask that Ken Gar be brought into the same district as the town. And that we want at least the three municipalities, Garrett Park, Kensington, and Chevy Chase View to stay within the same district. Is that what I'm hearing that we're all in agreement with? Whether they end up sending us, you know, into, you know, changing the lines and putting us in Wheaton-Glenmont or keeping it the way it is with Tacoma Park. I think that's the thing that we really don't know. I, I don't think it'll be heavy lifting to ask that Ken Gar be put in to our district, whatever it may end up being. Alright, so Darren, you want to take first stab at drafting a letter?
Of course I do.
Okay. My hero. Alright, so uh, Darren will uh, draft a letter that will touch at least on those three items. And then we'll uh, send it around to the council and we'll get it out. We'll definitely be in touch with Chevy Chase View as well as Garrett Park. So that um, and Ken Gar as well to sign on to a letter. Karen, I just need you to get someone uh, to find out who, uh, and Ann Lichter could probably help as well, of who we could send that to. Okay? Alright, I think that ends that.
Karen has moved away from Ken Gar, but can't, can't quit them.
I know. No, a lot of ties there. You can never, that's why people can't give up Kensington List serve when they move out of town. They just can't lose that tie. So anyway.
Yeah.
Or the curb alerts, that's what they're all waiting for. So, anyway. Alright, well, thank you all for that, that discussion. Alright, so we're going to move down to uh, to number four, uh, the University Boulevard um, Bike Lane Pilot, Nate?
Okay.
I can start, Nate.
Yeah, I was gonna say Connor.
Yeah, I'll start. No, I'll start and then, and then Nate will, will fill in why. Because Nate and I have been talking about this as it relates to the BPPA and what was the um.
Okay, I thought you were doing Connecticut Avenue, but I'll let you.
I'm gonna do that one next too, but the BPASWG. Nate, I don't know how you ever said that. Um, I had to literally write it down so I could try and get all the letters right.
It's an initialism. It's not an acronym.
So um, how this came about, uh, I happen to be, you know, at an event over um, off of University Avenue with one of our, our um, District Eighteen delegates, Jared Solomon. And there were representatives from Open Streets Montgomery that were there. And they were talking about at that stretch of university, they have done a road diet. And they took one of the lanes and they have converted it into um, uh, separated bike lanes. And it has been extremely successful. It has gotten, you know, people feel safer being able to bike because of the separation from vehicles. They, like a lot of our, you know, Connecticut and university avenues, have sidewalks that are immediately next to the roadways. They, you know, they were higher rates of speed. But at this stretch of university, where it was three lanes wide, the volume of cars, I realized it, it, the low, the road diet would do two things. One, it would open a lane for things like these separated bike lanes. But it also helped to channelize some of the traffic, which helped to slow it down. And it's been extremely, extremely successful, but it was a pilot program. And it was, and is slated to be um, uh, removed on November fourteenth. And so Open Streets Montgomery's representatives had reached out, because I, you know, had given them my information to see, because I had exchanged the idea that we had talked about potential lane diet on University Avenue at our section of town. And with that lane diet, it could open up other uses such as a separated bike lane. And so ironically, here would be two ends. And then it would be a conversation of, you know, how to bring those things together in the middle. So I, I reached out to Nate with his work on the Mobility Committee and what was previously the Working Group and everything, to talk about, you know, the recommendations that the Working Group and now the, you know, the BPPA would make for our section of town. And if so, a willingness from us as a community to send a letter that, uh, to, to Secretary Slater of, of Maryland DOT and Ministerator Smith, acknowledging the success of those bike lanes, the support for keeping them beyond a pilot, making them permanent. But then also to look at our section of town where we have also expressed that to S H A, that we would like to see similar um, uh, planning and infrastructure uh, for those kinds of uses within the town. Nate, what do you want to add?
Yeah, just a little, a little more detail, because we've um, I think most of the council knows. But for those who are listening that aren't aware of the report that the Working Group put together, the pedestrian bicycling safety access working group, um, access and safety working group, I can't even get it right. Back in January, one of the things was for um, a recommendation to do a road diet on the university, right? Where it branches with Connecticut. Where, and that's basically reducing a lane as it heads north towards uh, Wheaton. So we took that recommendation to S H A when we met with them, you know, back in the spring. And they said, okay, we'll study it. So they're studying it right now. They're in the process of doing a study on that. And we just needed to, you know, when this, this issue came about that is happening in Wheaton that Connor's referring to, that we're asking in the letter for them to extend indefinitely, we asked them, hey, can we do this in Kensington on our, um, on our stretch of university? They said, well, we have to wait for the study to be done. So we acknowledge that in the letter. There's, you know, our support being pushed towards or asking for us to, you know, to, to support this Wheaton expansion indefinitely of the, um, of the, the bike lane. And then thanking them and acknowledging, you know, we know we, this has to wait until the study is finished. But, you know, assuming that things go the way that we think they will, we would really like to have this considered um, a pilot in, in our stretch of, of university as well. So that's just, you know, there's a little bit of nuance there, because we know we have to wait for the study to wrap up. But we're not exactly sure when that will happen. We haven't heard yet, unless Matt and Tracy have heard from S H A on that.
Nate, how does it work from university, uh, once you get up to Veers Mill uh, to past Georgia, where there is, you know, uh, businesses there that rely on, on street parking? How does that work? Would they take that away?
I don't know. I actually don't know. Connor, have you seen it?
No, there was a part of, that's part of what, talking to some uh, folks in Montgomery Planning, that they're, you're also trying to figure out, because one of the things they hear in data that, that they get from other communities where they're putting this in, you know, these types of separated bike lanes in, is that it is helping those businesses, because it is bringing more local dollars, hyper-local dollars, people on bicycle and walking into those districts, because they feel it is safer. They feel it is uh, more pedestrian and bike friendly. But obviously, you know, there's still a lot of traffic, especially on, towards Veers Mill in Georgia, kind of in the heart of Wheaton. You know, Wheaton has.
There's a lot of congestion in that area.
There is, I mean, something that Wheaton and, and Kensington definitely shares is those state highways move a lot of people through the area, right? Our, ours is Connecticut, theirs is, you know, Georgia, Veers Mill, University, that whole, you know, while it is, Wheaton is certainly um, building up. They also just, they move a lot of vehicles northward through that section of Wheaton, and they still need to move that traffic.
Yeah, and where you have a separated bike lane, you can easily integrate it with parking. I mean, that's what's being considered on Kensington Parkway right now, with the Montgomery County Department of Transportation's improvement along that area. And it, it integrates it together.
Okay, well, the advantage to Wheaton is they actually have a lot of uh, parking lots, metered lots. So there is, you know, optional parking off the street. If you didn't want to park out in front of a business, you can park in a parking lot.
But we don't have any parking right now.
No, we don't. No, we don't.
And.
I'd just say in that section of, of Wheaton.
Looking, yeah, pulling up the county's Bicycle Master Plan Network. You, the, the actually, the stretch that doesn't get separated bike lanes, but just side paths, uh, for those who understand the, the technical difference, is really from our town border up until you get to Westfield-Wheaton Mall. And then the plan calls for separated bike lanes um, all the way through the heart of Wheaton, um, past uh, Amherst Avenue. And, and it's right in that location where the old W T O P um, um, satellite building is, which is where the dedicated um, uh, the road diet has occurred. So that, that's right in front of Wheaton Forest Local Park. So the Bicycle Master Plan calls for, you know, a connected, separated bike lane from that road diet, pretty much to the part of where we're asking for a road diet. Obviously, it just needs to be built in time as, you know, uh, either it's prioritized or redevelopment along that corridor of university occur.
Yeah, and it's not just, when, when they're doing the road diet study, it's not just out of bike lane. They're also considering, you know, widening the sidewalk and uh, separated graph buffer to make it safer to walk there too.
Okay, and that would follow after the pilot program? Is that correct? If it's successful?
I, I mean, I guess so. I guess they'd have to pilot whatever they're planning to do first, based on the data that they gathered for, for the, from their study.
Okay. Uh, Darren, Bridgette, do you have any questions for Connor or Nate?
So I, I guess I have a question, um, because I, to, to the study that they're doing only relate to the, I don't know, I call it north or eastbound movement of university from, you know, where it begins at Connecticut northward? Or, or is it the westbound direction as well?
I think, you know, I think they're doing both, but I don't see any, I, I don't know what, on what planet they would actually reduce the lane going south or west, because that's where it gets extremely congested. But I believe that in the meeting, they said they were going to do both.
Okay, because that, I mean, that, that's my only concern is um, you know, that's the reason we have to do that enter signs. That, that's the reason that um, rush hour traffic bails off of the university at the terminus of University Boulevard. I don't understand how it could, could possibly work to remove one of those lanes.
Yeah, we didn't ask for it, but I think they said they would do both. I could be wrong, but we definitely emphasized the north-eastbound direction. That's where it made, that's where it made sense. That's what we recommended in the report.
Yeah, because I think after Lexington, the congestion really starts about there.
I mean, if they take a lane away from there, we're not going to need just, you know, do not enter signs. We're going to need barricades and landmines.
Casually throw around landmine jokes, that's awesome.
Oh my goodness.
Anybody knew of any excess surplus forestry vehicles that could be used to block the roadway? Please let us know.
If I find that in the budget. There's one on the north side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Allegedly, Nate.
Alright, any, uh, any other council comments before we open it up to the audience?
I just wanted to say, um, one or two people independently text me excited about bike lanes. So this is super popular and congrats, good idea.
Okay, well, we'll see what, you know, the study says. So I, I can't imagine the northbound one would be that controversial. It should uh, hopefully go through. Anyone else in the audience? Open it up. Have a comment?
Hi, Mayor, it's Ann Banville. Yeah, hi, everybody. Um, my question goes to, do we have any bicycle usage data on, in the trial period? Uh, I ask, because in my travels back and forth the four corners, I do not see bicyclists. And um, it, so seems to me that's critical to understand before we give up lanes and things like that. Um, I know there is this theory of if we build it, they will come. But that hasn't happened in the Wood Glen Strip near Whole Foods um, up off Rockville Pike and other areas. So um, I guess I'm skeptical. Thank you.
Okay.
And.
Go ahead, Nate.
Um, I was just gonna say that, yeah, I mean, I think data they collect from the pilot they're doing now will show a lot, because I can tell you, you've got to be nuts to ride your bike right now on university or Connecticut. I've seen people do it when we were doing our bike, our um, walkability and bikability audit. I had that section. I saw some extremely experienced bikers, cyclists riding, I saw two. They looked extr, I mean, it was, they looked very out of place. It's just not, it's not a comfortable place to bike. Probably ninety-nine percent of the population would not feel comfortable as is. But your point to if they build it, they will come, and whether that theory is actually accurate, I think that's why we would pilot it first. So that's why it's a two-phased approach. We wouldn't suggest that they go and just build the infrastructure without us having some evidence that it would be used. I think that wouldn't be prudent. It's a good point.
And, and yeah, and I completely agree with it. And my anecdotal as to why I'm supportive is um, one of my kids, you know, Little League seasons uh, this year was at the Wheaton Forest Local Park, which is right there uh, where they had the, the road diet. And so every, you know, weekend, I was able to go out and see that there were a lot of people using it. I mean, a lot of people were making use of it. Clearly, it's, it's opened up connectivity into Wheaton from the communities that are east of, of Amherst. And that's when I really believe that, okay, as long as you can separate the cars and the bikes and make it safe, people were, were eager to do it. I'd like to see their data from, you know, their pilot uh, completes next week um, and see some of the data that they may have from theirs. And obviously, to Nate's point, I think, you know, we pilot anything before permanent here to ensure that it's, you know, having the, the proper and desired effect.
Thank you. Um, I will tell you this, that, that traffic is going to kill Kensington eventually. From below Chevy Chase Circle, or Chevy Chase Circle on up, it's always dicey. But when you get past the Beltway area and then go up through Kensington, uh, it is awful. And it is most time of day, even with the pandemic. And before we give up um, a lane on a major throughway, I really want us to think twice about what we're doing. I really want us to think twice about what we're doing. And Nate, you referenced what's being considered for lower Kensington Parkway. That's, that's pretty much dead in the water. The people who live along there, uh, use that area for parking since they don't have places for service people and guests and others to park. Um, they are reluctant to give it up, and I understand that completely. So, uh, although I am very sympathetic with cyclists, I really have mixed feelings about giving up so much on a bet on the uh idea of the cyclist relative to the the cars that are used. That's simply not a major way that people commute. Thank you.
Let me just add to some of this. Um, uh, um, I, in my twenty-some years of commuting down Connecticut Avenue, I've seen one cyclist, um, Connecticut Avenue. So, you know, in some ways, if you build it, they will come, but if they don't, let's take it away. I think it's nuts to continue to have a a bike lane, even if it's shared with traffic on Connecticut Avenue. Um, I think that University Boulevard, what I'm hearing from the other council members is that, you know, a recognition that it might work for the northbound lane, but it will not work for the southbound lane. Um, Connor mentioned weekend trips on um University Boulevard. I'd made weekday rush hour trips. And I just feel like, and I know it's during the pandemic and, you know, we're not fully back, obviously, but, um, I do feel like that we over, that the county or state, whoever did it, overbuilt university and it can, um, withstand the production from three to two lanes, just simply not when it ends at Connecticut, because that's, that's, that's a choke point. So, um, you know, I I would hope we can sort of accommodate the the various modes of transportation and and see if we can't, you know, build some safer aspects of bike biking along university.
Um, Ann, did you want to make a comment?
Uh, maybe I want to express my concerns, and I think they're being heard. Uh, thank you very much. Um, again, I point out the, the area over near Whole Foods, if anybody is familiar with that, is now is exactly what's being discussed. A lane was taken away. There's a parking lane and a bicycling lane and a uh sidewalk there. And the only thing that gets used there is the parking, which is much more difficult because you've got to maneuver through bars and and so on to get there. So, um, I don't know about this, folks. I just want to be cautious. Uh, and again, just circle back and just say the traffic ultimately is going to kill the aesthetics of living in Kensington if we're not careful.
Okay, thank you, Ann, for your comments.
Tracy, before you go to the other, I I know that other people have your hand up, but I just want to correct Ann's point on the Kensington Parkway, expansion of adding an addition of a bike lane in that stretch south of town is not dead in the water. They're actually accommodating the residents' concerns and integrating parking and the bike lane. So, I just, you know, I think it's important that people know that that is in the process of moving forward. As far as I've heard, um, I've been following it very closely. If you have other information, I'd love to hear it, but um, according to Kyle Lucas, it's still moving forward.
Thank you. They have not let us know that.
Okay, I mean, they've, have they told you that it's been canceled?
We have a very active group that's following it and reporting back, and it got put on hold for some reason. And then I have not seen any recent um report from the county in terms of taking everybody's comments into effect and what configuration they suggest as a result. I have not seen that.
Maybe we can get an update on that.
Yeah, I'll ask, I'll ask Kyle for another update. I know that he's been on leave for a little while, but I'll get back to everybody.
Okay, and thank you, Ann. Uh, we'll go to the other Ann, Ann Lichter. You had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say briefly that um I I think one of the benefits of what Connor described is that it was a pilot. And so to the extent that, you know, there's a a chance to explore the viability of road edits or traffic calming and increasing safety and mobility for cyclists and pedestrians. And if that indeed would have benefits to our local business community, benefits to our quality of life, it's worth exploring, and then we can find out whether it um has the same, you know, beneficial um effects here or if um, or if it doesn't. And and so I would support uh getting in the mix for any pilot conversations.
Great, thank you, Ann. Uh, Jack, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Regarding what you do with parking and having the bike lane, uh, an interesting idea. In the city of Montreal, they park the cars away from the curb and then have the bike lane between the parked cars and the curb. The bicycles, uh, cyclists are are much more protected that way.
Yeah, I believe uh the one at Whole Foods that Ann was talking about is that way.
Yeah, that's right.
And DC does that some too.
Yeah, the the bikes are by the curb and then the cars are out further, the parked cars.
Right, that's a good idea.
Yeah, thanks, Jack. Is anybody else? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. All right, I don't think there's any action on that. Is this, is that correct? Are you?
Uh, there's the draft letter that is in the packet.
Yes.
That, you know, is open for, you know, edits, uh, if if other council members had it or if you think it's good. It, you know, the language in there is is just a voice that we understand the pilot over on the eastern edge of Wheaton is coming to a close, and we, you know, see that it has been um, very successful and we, you know, if if it warrants, we would like to voice our support for continuing beyond a pilot. And then, as Nate pointed out, it's really also to reinforce the study that we've asked for and that, you know, this is something that we are interested in as, you know, one of the the potential outcomes of the the road diet study they're doing for the portion of university, uh, you know, in and at the border of the town of Kensington.
Okay, yeah, thank you. It was the one to Secretary Slater, so thank you.
Correct.
Okay. Um, Council, are you, uh, you want to make a motion to um to send that letter? Uh, I don't know if anybody had any edits. I didn't see any when it was sent out as a draft.
Unless or no, I can make a motion?
Yeah, I just, in case you want to reread it after this.
To Secretary Slater um promoting the the uh the expansion of the pilot or the indefinite expansion of the the bike pilot for the bike lane in Wheaton.
Okay, do you wanna, do you wanna just add with uh maybe some minor edits if people need to refresh themselves too?
Sure, I've got a move to, I'm holding over again?
Well, no, you don't need to. Just, I'm just asking to add the edits in case.
With added edits, um, that might come in after the council meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi. Up, Darren, discussion?
I just want to make sure that potential edits includes chopping the study and the support of the road diet in Kensington from eastbound only. As long as that's considered a minor edit that can be included in the letter, I I just do not want to support a westbound road diet.
Darren, the study is happening right now, and we're just saying it's gonna incorporate the results of the study or wait until, we need to wait to advocate for this until the study's done. It doesn't say.
I hear that. It just says so that we can proceed with the associated road diet. And and so I don't want to get too much into.
Do you want to add the word pilot on the east side? That's fine.
You mean the westbound? Um, look, maybe I should trust that the study is, that shows that would be a disaster. Um, and and that they won't support that, but um, I I I'm just, I'm sorry, I support edits. I just want to potentially read it, edits expansively, because I think that it would be a disaster to restrict.
Well, I think, I think we have voted on allowing for edits. You can, somebody can define what expansive is, but I think uh, if you want to make some edits and circulate it to the group, I think the bottom line is we agree that we want to send a letter to Secretary Slater supporting the bike lane uh diet pilots. So I think that's pretty, pretty clear. So, uh, and then you can ask the council if they agree with your edit. How's that?
Okay, Mayor, Tracy.
Just, I'm just looking to move on before that baby starts crying. I'm wondering.
I I feel strongly we'll be able to reconcile this, so just send your edits over to Darren.
Walk too, so.
Okay, so let's move on to the Connecticut Avenue speeds, please, number five.
Um, so the mayor asked me, I brought this forward as something that I wanted to discuss with the entirety of the council, which is um, making a request to S H A to reduce the posted speed limit on Connecticut Avenue within the town and really, you know, focused on our commercial corridor, town center, whatever you want to call it. So I am right now defining that to be um more or less Warner Street at the south end of town, all the way to the northern border at Perry Street. And as background, here's kind of how I came about this idea. Uh, it was a, I don't want to use the word collision when we're talking about speeds and and people. Uh, it was an amalgamation of a couple of different things this month. One was um Maryland DOT and Secretary Slater held a number of what they called their Walktober webinars, which were all about uh focused on pedestrian and bicycle safety and and specifically number three was about pedestrian safety, both from an enforcement standpoint and a built environment, but also uh MDOT very specifically talked data around uh pedestrian uh accidents and survivability. And so the numbers that they used were, you know, accidents between vehicles and pedestrians at forty-five miles an hour tended to have only a ten percent survivability rate. But if you are able to reduce that speed to twenty-five miles an hour, they have a ninety percent survivability rate. So, um, you know, what we would be looking to do is just within the town borders, uh, in that area where we are trying to build a more pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, but also business-friendly in activation, you know, as we're doing redevelopment, activating sidewalks and streetscapes and streeteries and things like that. Um, the the other thing that came into this was, you know, the ability to sit in and just listen to different agencies talk about development along Connecticut Avenue. Uh, and they, and these agencies were Park and Planning, S H A, uh, Montgomery County DOT. They each made reference to or made a comment um about, you know, redevelopment will help to slow down traffic, that, you know, uh, you know, in its current condition, people don't, wouldn't really want to eat outside and traffic's too fast. There's too much traffic. And and so what I saw, though, was them talking about, you know, ways to slow traffic down. And the built environment is certainly one way to do it, but it's the longer term, more expensive way. In a shorter term, more impactful way is uh or or more uh immediate way would be to just lower the speed limit. But my my third reason was in driving around the county on other state highways, namely Georgia Avenue through Wheaton, portions of university and Veres Mill through Wheaton, and on three fifty-five through Bethesda, I've noticed that in all of their areas where their commercial centers are, the county has reduced and state highway administration has reduced the posted speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. The only area that has not had this is Connecticut Avenue. Um, and so with a, you know, with our BPPA designation and our focus on trying to create a more pedestrian, bicycle, safe and um um friendly area, I'd like to consider, and and the action here would simply be writing a letter to Secretary Slater and and the uh District Three Engineers and the Montgomery County uh DOT requesting that they evaluate reducing our posted speed limit from twenty, uh thirty-five to twenty-five miles an hour.
Do we include the District Eighteen team in that?
Yes, I would, uh, because uh I've reached out and talked to a few of them and then, you know, they're supportive of of it as well, uh, you know, if it's what we want to do, but it, it makes sense to everybody. Um, this is a trend that, you know, we are seeing more and more across counties. I talked about these other state highways. It's already happened. Um, so I would include our District Eighteen as well. And for that matter, you know, our District One County Council rep.
Okay. And I.
Or District Four.
Or District Four, or potentially District Five.
Or eight or nine. Let's go to District Ten. Let's pick up our own district. Um, I, Leslie had put into the chat something about lack of speed camera. We we do have one speed camera. It's on uh Warner going southbound, uh, or excuse me, northbound uh at Warner Memorial. And Matt, it doesn't generate, uh, well, we don't get any money from it, not very much, cuz uh people are pretty much naturally slowing up to the light. Is that correct? Is that?
What happens there? Uh, two fiscal years ago, we didn't receive any revenue funds. Last year, we received about, what, three thousand or thirty-five hundred dollars? But as you mentioned, the the traffic is already slowing northbound when it reaches uh Warner Memorial home church.
Right, but then they pick up the speed again once they get through that light. So, um, do you, do you know what they're going to get? Uh, you said all of Connecticut Avenue is at thirty-five? Is that what you?
No, so it's thirty-five, uh, I mean.
And I'm not talking about the village of Chevy Chase where they've got it.
Yeah, but starting at four ninety-five, the northbound direction is thirty-five miles an hour. Um, oddly, there are portions southbound, right past Rock View Elementary School, that dropped to thirty, but then come back up to thirty-five. I don't, I can't even understand why. And when I tried to go to the state highways, uh, uh, their map that shows all posted speed limits, I can tell you that map has not been updated in four years. Um, so the data from from state highway is unreliable, but there's a couple of sections where just driving it, there's little stretches of thirty, but by and large, it's thirty-five.
It'd be interesting to see what they end up with the speed limit there at Chevy Chase Lake. What that, cuz now with the density that's going in there.
Yeah, and, you know, my my second suggestion outside of of us engaging uh S H A for the portions within the town is, and it goes to what we've talked about before, working down Connecticut Avenue with the other municipalities, is to reach out in a more formal way to, starting with Chevy Chase View immediately to our south, and just begin a dialogue. I, you know, Matt, I know you talk with with their town uh manager, but, you know, council to council, just start to talk and have a dialogue about that whole stretch of Connecticut Avenue, and if there are things that communally we want to raise our voices together on around pedestrian safety.
And and I know the answers to these questions, but I like asking you, Connor, cuz you answer them so well. But on a speed camera, uh, it's not, you don't get a ticket when, you know, if it's thirty-five miles an hour and you're going thirty-six, you don't get a ticket until what speed?
So it's part of state law. State law is twelve miles per hour over the posted speed limit. So, you know, thinking of the cameras along Connecticut Avenue where the posted speed limit is thirty-five, you can go forty-six and not trigger. And and that's why it's very interesting to me, not that they set it up this way, but the 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 data that Maryland DOT was showing during these webinars were very, they were focused around forty-five miles an hour and reducing to twenty-five miles an hour. Now, realistically, even a posted twenty-five means they can go thirty-six and not trigger a a camera. But at thirty-six miles an hour from forty-six, you have a marginally more, you know, you have a larger percentage chance of surviving a a, an accident with a motor vehicle.
So it 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 seems to make sense to reduce our, ask to reduce the speed to twenty-five with the knowledge that most people are not gonna go to twenty-five. They're gonna go probably thirty-five, which is what they should be doing now anyway, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And and, you know, I've talked to a couple of other neighbors and, you know, some of the comments were, well, you know, and it goes, uh, Ann Banville, you had this point. I mean, we have congestion and so there are swaths of the day where uh traffic doesn't even move twenty-five. Fully acknowledge that. But let's just post the speed limit where we would like traffic to be going. And, you know, we could do the whole town stretch, but I would, you know, I was very purposely trying to define our commercial corridor, which is, I see it as Warner Street at the south to Perry, because that is what we are trying to, as things redevelop, improve the the sidewalks. That's where some of these bike facilities will go. You know, more places are interested in doing outdoor dining, and outdoor dining would be along there, and this can be very successful. As you look at other parts of the county where people are dining outside, right along the road, but what they don't want is, you know, is a major highway where cars are going fifty miles an hour through it, which I've looked at the data and there are still people traveling fifty miles an hour on Connecticut. Um, I don't know if they don't know the cameras are there or. Um, I, I don't know if they don't know the cameras are there or they just know exactly where the cameras are. But when we put out the little boxes, they, there are people flying down Connecticut.
Yeah. All right, council, any other, you want to make any comments?
Yeah, just to add a couple of things, um, because this also was one of the recommendations in the working group report back in January, and we brought the issue to S H A District Three in the meeting um that we have with them, the same meeting I referenced earlier when I was talking about the road diet. And their response was, okay, well, we'll look into it, but they're doing a study right now. Um, another study from Connecticut, a, along Connecticut corridor from the D C border up to university to identify areas for improvements for um pedestrians and bicyclists. So that is an important study that I think is wrapping up now. Um, what, that will actually inform our T L C grant study that we're going to study the Connecticut Avenue corridor. And we got the grant for that's happening right now, so that's going to be a key input to that. And one of the things that they're tasked with considering is a reduction in speed, so um, you know, of course, I think a formal letter would be helpful, especially if the conditions are there and and we can just get it done. I guess the only thing that I'd be slightly hesitant about is that let's, what happens if the study comes back and says it should drop to twenty during, in that area, right? Um, if we do it now to twenty-five, do we undermine our ability to do it further? Not saying that that's what's going to happen, but um, just to put that out there as a potential point of caution, but still I'd be, I'd be very supportive of um of putting the letter forward.
Should the letter, should the letter just mention we, we would, you know, whatever the lowest speed that they would?
Is that they'll consider.
Worded in a way that you were asking for twenty-five, but hey, if you want to take it down to twenty, we're for, we, you know, we're for that.
My fear is they may also then only go to thirty.
What do you mean?
I think that, well, if we leave it open, now, now it's thirty-five, northbound, thirty, uh.
No, thirty for town.
Okay, um, the.
Darren, are you talking, are you talking, Darren?
Sorry, I know you know. There are parts of town where it is thirty-five, but in the center of town, it's thirty.
Like right around Howard, yeah.
And it, it changes, I think it washed um right above the speed camera. That I, armor, I think.
Yeah.
But and and it's weird because it doesn't change in the same place, northbound versus southbound. But I, you know, I'm all forgetting what we can for, for lower speeds, I'm, you know. Absolutely, yes, of what Chevy Chase Village has for actual speeds going through the town. And and I think that's a result, not, I mean, I, I think the speed is technically thirty through Chevy Chase Village, but the lane widths, you know, are, are traffic calming measure.
All right, well, let me, let me uh get some reactions from the uh, from the audience if they have any questions. Although, Bridget, did you have any comments before we open it up?
No, um, I, I kind of think everyone's on the same page as me. I'm, I'm interested, I think it would be uh probably a lot safer to drop the, the speeds down. I see people speed up, fly right up into the cameras and then stop. You know, I'm right on Connecticut Ave, I see it all the time.
Oh, yeah, well, how often is that uh sign taken out there at uh?
We, I think Kathy Bus and I counted, it was like at one point, two years ago, once a week, somebody would hit it.
Knock on wood, it's been a while, but yeah.
It has, I don't even want to talk about it.
I know. Sorry I brought it up. Um, Jack, you have a question, hands raised.
Comment, actually, you have to put what Connor was saying and all, like, to remind you that the kinetic energy of a car goes as the velocity squared. Also, the stopping distance goes as the velocity squared. So, so going from twenty-five to forty-five makes a big difference.
It does. Thank you, Jack. Uh, Joe, you got your hand up?
I do, Mayor Furman, thank you. Um, sounds like a great idea. I'm sure there are a lot of people in favor of this. Uh, like a lot of great ideas we've had in Kensington over the years, the question of enforcement uh looms here. It hasn't been discussed, and I'm just wondering how we're going to enforce this, if we can enforce uh other traffic calming measures such as no left turns from Frederick Avenue onto Kent Street and uh and the like. I mean, there, there are a lot of places in town where great intentions, uh, traffic calming issues or uh measures have been put into place, but there's almost no enforcement and it's, these, these areas tend to be violated um uh in terms of the traffic regulations chronically. So I guess the question is for Connor is, what do you see in terms of enforcement of this proposal of yours?
Sure, so obviously, I'm going to state the obvious, but not to be flippant. We, we don't have our own police force, right? So we rely on the county. Um, there's also the county um uh Safe Speeds Corridor Program, of which the majority of Connecticut Avenue qualifies for, so many, you know, uh, the ten thousand blocks, all the way up to like ten thousand, you know, ten, seven hundred. All of those areas are areas that are part of that Safe Speed Corridor where, you know, one mechanism just of, of enforcement is cameras. We have one fixed camera, they, there, there are other methods of cameras that, you know, we could look into as a municipality in partnership with the county about how to set up those programs and and, you know, do automated enforcement. But otherwise, yes, we are, you know, the enforcement of these uh, of any traffic rule is we are reliant on the county. And so would it have to be us as a, you know, municipality advocating to M C P D and or, you know, deciding on if that's an enforcement area that we want to consider with that which we fund directly? But right now, our focus with, you know, as you know, Joe, from previous conversations, our, our focus has been on our residential streets uh with, with those budgetary dollars, but that, those are the mechanisms available to us.
Would you be anticipating using the um M C P D who are assigned to Kensington, who work for us, I guess, essentially, would they be in the mix in terms of enforcing this proposed measure?
I think, you know, we have to prioritize what are our enforcement zones in the sense that it's not an unlimited budget line that we have for those officers that we pay to uh come in and and patrol our streets in some capacity. So, you know, this is a trade-off. Would we rather them on our residential roads, working on those things that we're hearing from residents want to be enforced? The do not enters, the cut through traffic uh or the traffic along uh Connecticut Avenue?
If I can just add to that, Connor, um, because I, I think that with respect to speeds, there are probably three things that are at work aside from a policeman with a radar. There, um, first is if you lower the speed, I think people's personal comfort level with pushing how fast they're going to go for fear of getting pulled over is going to go down as well. So if the speed is thirty-five, they might go forty-two without a fear of being stopped. If we lower it to twenty-five or thirty, their comfort level will go down. Um, the other thing I would say is that um, you know, the speed bump in some parts of the world is referred to as a sleeping policeman. It's just, it's a, it's a traffic calming measure that is always there and doesn't require an actual police officer to be there. Things like lane narrowing and other traffic, traffic coming measures are things that will slow speeds down without the, the need of a, of an active police officer giving tickets. And then the, the third thing, which I know Matt has been looking into and and will report on at some point is uh, we have a radar speed sign that it's, right now, I think it's on Howard Avenue. And um, just the awareness of your speed posted next to what the actual speed is has a, has a, it slows traffic down. So if we can get to the point where we can put that sign onto state highways, then I think we're going to see uh an actual lowering of speeds. I don't need tickets to be issued, I need speeds to be lowered. And however we get there is, is what I'm interested in.
It seems like there's got to be more proactive enforcement measures that, to make this, to make this work, given the volume of traffic that we have day in and day out on Connecticut Avenue, so. Um, yeah, we can have those little um cameras on, on the side of the street, but you know, I just don't think that for the, for the length of the um roadway that, that Connor Crimmins is referring to here, I think we're going to need more than that.
Well, unfortunately, you don't see the, the radar officers out there on Connecticut Avenue that you once did maybe five or six years ago. Now they, they use speed cameras, of course, a lot, so. Um, you know, they have the temporary ones that they may move in for a short period of time, but um I think um enforcement in general is just not an area that the police are, are looking at countywide and uh traffic and, you know, traffic calming is more of uh what they're using, so. Okay, um, so it sounds like uh we do want to write a letter. So we're going to uh send a draft around to the council uh regarding the speed and we'll try to make sure it's worded in a way that will um be reflective of um uh the concern that Nate brought up uh regarding going down to twenty miles, so not just stating we want twenty-five. So we'll get that figured out. Connor, did you want to start a draft on that?
Yeah, I can start a draft and then um, I don't know who you'd like, but I, you know, I think it would be good to reach out, starting with Chevy Chase View and um just start talking about the bigger Connecticut Avenue. Um, you know, it's kind of partner, you know, sister communities.
Well, I know, uh, I was just going to say, I know they're not a municipality, of course, but Rock Creek Palisades, which is the neighborhood that is just north of Connecticut Avenue. They have had a terrible time because, you know, after you get past Rock View, the speed does go up and the amount of uh, there's this noise more than anything else. Um, I'm, you know, that neighborhood actually would sign on to a letter, I'm sure, if we're advocating for the lowering of, of the, of the speed on Connecticut. Go ahead, Nate, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. No, I was just going to say that Jenna Coe, actually, the town manager of Chevy Chase View is actually on our working group. So we talked about this a little bit bilaterally and there, she's very eager to have this conversation and continue it. I know she talks to Matt. Um, we should also have it in the context of possibly asking for more speed cameras. I know that I get the sense there might be some more receptivity of that at the county level right now. So I think that that is part of the solution, but I would echo what Darren and Connor have already said in response to uh to Joe's comments, is this is really about behavior change. It's, you know, enforcement's a, a, a part of it, I would say a smaller part of it, and it's really about more of the potpourri of all of these solutions taken together. And that's why, to make a plug for the, you know, for participating in this study that we're going to do, that we're doing now on improving safety and access along the corridor. I mean, this is one of the many of solutions that are going to be considered um together. So I think that it's really about changing behavior and um, you know, enforcement's part of that, but not, not the whole story.
Okay, great, thank you, Nate. All right, so um, next item. I'm sorry, what? Okay, uh, number six, the town survey update. Um, Alex, I believe you're going to give that survey and want to share your screen.
Yes, give me just a second to share it.
Well, Alex is sharing that. Matt, do we need a motion or anything on the letter that, for speed lowering?
You could, you could send a motion out and just say um, as reviewed by the council.
Okay, I'm going back one, if, if again, I move that we send a letter to S H A um requesting a, you know, the, the possibility of reducing the speed limit within the town of Kensington um pursuant to input from the council, uh, and I will draft the first version.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Alex?
Okay, so can you also see my screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the town sent out approximately fifteen hundred surveys to registered voters in the town and we received back um approximately three hundred and nine, or we received three hundred and ninety-six. And uh, just to refresh uh on the questions, question one was about whether or not the town should permit sixteen, seventeen-year-olds to vote in town elections. And question two was whether the town should permit um town residents who are not U S citizens um to vote in town elections. So brief overview, um, of the three hundred and ninety-six we received by mail or in person, three hundred and ninety-four, those were the cards that we sent out in the mail and two were printed from the website. Uh, we had about a twenty-six percent response rate. And so for question one, uh, the total respondents who answered yes was about thirty percent and those who answered no was about seventy percent. And uh, three hundred and ninety-four folks answered that one. Uh, there's a bit of a discrepancy because there were a few who only answered question one or two um instead of both. So I noticed I read and tabulated all the comments and there were some general themes that we saw. So those who voted yes for question one, we should allow sixteen, seventeen-year-olds to vote in town elections. Uh, most of those comments said we get young people involved sooner, helping them get engaged and uh and politically active in uh in the town. And some said it gets them in the habit of researching candidates early. Um, and then those who voted no, they also shared similar sentiments. Uh, some, uh, some said that a lot of these folks are still living at home and don't have a lot of financial responsibility yet, they could still be under the influence of their parents. Uh, the eighteen is a legal threshold to adulthood for a lot of things. And uh, if you lower the voting age, then it could become a slippery slope. Why not lower it to um fifteen, fourteen and so forth? Um, these are federal voting guidelines and a lot of them did express that they do want youth involved politically, but uh in ways that are other than voting. So for question two, uh, we had forty-nine percent of respondents say yes and fifty-one percent said no. Uh, of this, we had three hundred and ninety-two responses. And uh, some general themes for the yeses, uh, we had a lot of folks say if someone lives in Kensington and pays taxes, uh particularly property taxes, they should have a say in town government. Uh, a lot of them also expressed the wish conditions. So if you pay a town property tax, if you lived here for a certain amount of time, uh, if you can prove you're in the process of obtaining citizenship or here on some type of visa, then uh you should be able to vote. Uh, and then as far as no's, a lot of people said voting is a privilege of citizenship, you should be a citizen to vote. And uh, they also expressed the similar sentiments actually to the yeses. They would be willing if uh the folks in question are legal residents with a green card. Uh, and that's all I have.
Okay, great. I think we are pretty pleased with the, uh, with the number of people that actually responded to the survey. Um, so I think uh we, we got a good general idea of what people were thinking, which was our goal. So um, I think, uh, see, Nate and Darren, you were uh had, were behind the survey questions. I don't know if you want to make comments on the, on the report?
Darren, you could go first if you want. Or do you want me to go? You're muted. You're muted, Darren.
But what he's saying is really amazing.
It was, okay, I'm, I'm not sure I can. I can be as, you know, insightful this time, but I, I, I would say that um we've never had a town meeting that has had three hundred and ninety-six people attend and give their views on a matter. So I'm, I'm glad that we did a survey because I feel like the level of engagement on this was greater than uh we would have for other, other things that we put, put out for public comment. You know, I, I, I would like to feel like the, the results as to the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds was fairly decisive. I feel like the um results as to non-citizens is um, you know, susceptible to further conversation. I, I, one of the things that um in, in Alex's summary that, that was interesting to me was the the comment that maybe if we expand it to um, you know, have it be U S citizens plus green card holders, that that would be a, 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 a good uh way to slice the, the issue. So anyway, I, I, I really appreciate the, the staff putting the survey together. I think it was. I think it was a good way to solicit broader opinion, which, um, I think we needed on this issue. That's all.
Nate?
Yeah, yeah, I had a similar reaction. And I think, you know, thanks again to the staff for putting the survey together. I think it, it was very decisive on the first question. But I think now we can, we've collected enough information to know that it's probably worthy of pursuing more input on the second one. Um, I guess I just had a question for, I guess, the council, but then also maybe Matt and Alex. If you knew how many, um, first of all, the two surveys that were printed from the, the, the website and then submitted, do we know what they said in terms of their, their qualitative information that they submitted? Because I'm, I'm assuming those are people who are not able to vote now. So it'd be good to hear those views specifically. And then do we have a count of how many people this would actually affect? Is it like, are we talking, I don't think we ever collected this information. Are we talking like five households? Are we talking like 50?
So I have, I have all the surveys still. I don't know off the top of my head what the paper ones voted. Um, and I don't know, I don't think we're talking about a terribly large number of people for either group, but I don't know the exact number.
Okay.
So our voter list through the county has 16 and 17 year olds on it already. Susan, you might remember it was less than 50 for that. Uh, and we don't have specific numbers for, uh, non-residents. I know other than the residents that have reached out to us, uh, there's, you know, maybe eight or 10 that I can think of off the top of my head. So.
Yeah, I guess how will we even identify them? Like, that's, that's a totally different question. But, yeah, I think that maybe, so for me, I, I would like to suggest that we pursue a public hearing for the, uh, for the non-residents, giving them access to vote and then hear residents' views at a, at a, at a meeting. Because I think that if it's 50/50, you know, that's a good debate and it'd be great to hear discussion on that. Um, but I'd like, I'd love to see these people who, who are talking about if we, if we choose to change our code and, and charter to be able to vote in the next election. We shouldn't wait anymore. That's all.
Connor?
I mean, first, I'll echo the thanks to the staff. Two things I came away with. One, I do think the first question was fairly decisive, but to the comment that there are other ways that, um, 16 and 17 year olds can be involved. You know, one is there are some committees that may make sense that they may, you know, want to join, but I get it, maybe not. The other thing though, that we have actively done in the last couple of months is that the town went and we got ourselves registered with Montgomery County volunteers so that we can, uh, when it makes sense, if there are, you know, events going on in the town, we can offer service hours to, you know, the, the kids in Montgomery County schools who need them for graduation. So there are ways that we, we now have the active ability to sign off on some of those SSL hours. So if they are helping the town out in a capacity, uh, Alex, I think Rose has pinned on you that you are helping to, to keep track of that when we have an event. Um, but that's another way that at least the town has taken a step to say, we realize that we've got 16 and 17 year olds and even younger who have this requirement through Montgomery County Public Schools to have service learning hours and now we can help to, um, approve those hours uh, through the official Montgomery County volunteers. So there's other ways that, you know, uh, kids can get involved in helping the town in, in it, you know, it kind of goes both ways. Um, my other comment is just a, a kind of, I would like, Nate, I'm picking on you. So I wanted to make sure you, you knew I heard, you heard my call on you. I want the debate too. I think 50/50, I do want the debate. Here's what I worry about. This can be a politicized issue and there are some people who may feel very strongly. And, and putting out an anonymous survey allowed them to voice their, their side, one or the other, whatever it may be. But are they also willing to come into a Zoom or if we're back in session into the council chambers and stand up and, and give their same thoughts on that topic? And, and I don't, I, I do wonder if we would get a, a, a fully open debate on it. I'd like to see it. I just, I think there are some people who would, you know, it, I just feel we wouldn't get as much of an open dialogue as I would hope.
So then you think we have enough information to, if we chose to go forward with it?
That's the thing. I, I, I don't, um, I think if anything, one idea might be to, that hey, it's 50/50 is a, I, you know, I still think we should have a public hearing because there are still some people who would like to be heard and we, we owe it to those people and I, I want to hear from them, both sides. But it also says that we don't have to, we don't have to do anything with this. In the sense that what we could do is say, you know what, we're gonna run the survey again next year or two years from now and just see if the temperature is shifting.
I'm laughing because I'm seeing Joe Campbell's head explode, even though he's not on the video right now. No, I think that that's a good point. But, I mean, hey, I'm willing to take that vote now. I mean, what other, what other information do we need? It's 50/50. We're talking, when we get the information about how many people we're, we're talking about in the end. I mean, it's probably on us to do it if we're not gonna have a public meeting.
I also, I mean, just to chime in here, I would argue that it isn't 50/50, right? If we look at the overlap of no votes who are saying yes if, right, effectively. I mean, I wonder if the way we wrote the question, if we changed the question slightly, that number might change dramatically, right? So if we're saying people who are here legally or people who have permanent residency or XYZ um, and live in the town and pay their taxes, like, should they be able to vote? I wonder if that number wouldn't change significantly.
I think you also have to explain how they would be, that you have to actually register with the town. You're kept in a separate list because they, you know, they're not on the county roll. So we would have to actually, they would register directly to the town to, in order to vote and have to prove in some way, whatever, you know, criteria it is that we're coming up with that, uh, you know, is voted on.
I think in this town, that's less a divisive question than we think.
Right. No, I understand. I'm just saying that would be how it would probably have to work.
Yeah, no, no, I agree. I agree.
But so what I would like, one, one approach forward is, you know, I'm, I'm certainly happy to, given the 50/50 split, field a, um, you know, potential code or maybe a charter revision. I can't remember which it is. I think it's charter. I would like, um, I would like Alex to go through the surveys and, because I, I, I do think those are the more honest, uh, feedback from the residents as opposed to who show up at a town meeting and speak. Um, I, I would like the, um, written comments for the non-citizens to be compiled and see if we reach a, a, kind of a, a load star of, of that view. You know, if the load star points us towards, um, green card residents, but nobody else, then, then I think that's, you know, informative.
Well, right now on this call, we have eight residents that are just hearing this information on the results of the survey. So I think it's important that we get the survey out to the residents as a whole. And that's why I was, uh, in an earlier email, just was suggesting that we put this in the journal, the next journal, which unfortunately wouldn't be until January, uh, and then explaining what the council, the direction of the council would like to take, uh, regarding the survey. So we would obviously need a consensus on that. If the consensus is to, you know, to move forward, I mean, it's a, it's a basically a four month process of an introduction of a hearing of a vote. And then you have 30 days for it to take effect. So that would get you probably to May. And the next election would be in June. You would obviously have to get people to register as well.
Let me try to respond to a couple of the comments in the chat. Um, you know, just historically, there, there were some interest in expanding the registry, the voting eligibility to 16 and 17 year olds. I think after the survey and tonight, we're, we're, we're moving past that. But, but there are also movements throughout the country to expand it to beyond simply, um, citizens of, of the US. I didn't, you know, I don't have strong feelings about that. I, I think by and large, the, the residents in Kensington who would be affected by that are, you know, the Canadian spouse of a US citizen who lives here and has lived here for a long period of time. The Irish spouse of a US citizen who's lived here and, you know, is, is actively engaged in the community. And so from that perspective, we were looking at, you know, for, I, I, I don't want to say that the election of me in June was a momentous event or that had national implications. And, and so expanding it to, um, the Canadian or the Irishman, um, you know, I don't think it's a huge deal. And, and so that's why I'm, I, I would be interested in, in considering it and hearing from, from people about that.
When you say hearing from them, you want to talk personally or in a hearing?
Oh, I'm talking about, we propose a charter revision. I'm not sure what we propose. I mean, you know, based on, I, I would like to see sort of the, the complete set of comments. You know, if anybody submitted them for the non-citizens. And if, if we get, my personal temperature is expanding it to green card holders would be appropriate. Um, these are people who have made an effort to be a permanent resident of the US. It puts them on a glide path to citizenship if they choose. Um, and, and so to me, they're, you know, they're kind of indistinguishable from our typical resident who's here for 30 days and suddenly eligible to vote.
Do I just make a suggestion that, um, you, instead of saying green card, we say permanent resident? Because like, for example, Salim came here when he was two. He didn't get a green card till he's 27. Um, you know, but he was here legally. Uh, so, you know, I, I would just suggest that maybe you lower that bar a little bit. Um, you know, folks like Salim kind of get lost in the slush with that.
What was, I, I, I'm sorry. And, and this is, I, I'm not an immigration expert at all. A, did he vote for me? And B.
Despite my efforts, yes.
What, what is, what, what, what was the status until then that we could consider bringing into the, um,
So I think he had a student visa. Um, by virtue of the fact that the attorney that his family hired kind of dropped the ball at one point. Um, so he had a student visa. Literally everyone else in his family had the green card. It's like technically had to leave and come back.
And it's a weird, I mean, I, I, I have a little more experience than I'm letting on. It's, it's, you know, whether or not you gave a green card before you're 18 and after is, is a big deal. So.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I don't know the nuances.
All I'm asking is that ultimately, if we move forward with this, we are doing it on our own without the help of sort of the county bureaucracy that can handle this. Or the Tacoma Park bureaucracy that, you know, is much bigger than we have. So we're asking staff to process, um, voter registrations. And showing a green card is, you know, easy. Showing, I just want to, I want to make it, um, accessible for them to say, and, you know, to say, there's a line that you meet or you don't meet and we have consciously expanded it from US citizen to X.
Can we do a little digging on it?
Yes, absolutely. We're, we're not doing anything tonight.
Okay.
We don't even have a charter resolution, charter revision.
Got it.
Okay, so, uh, sounds like, uh, we're going to be kind of digging in a little bit more into the second question. And maybe discussing further at the December meeting. Is that what I'm hearing? We can send the survey, obviously the, uh, results that, um, the report that Alex gave tonight can be posted on the website. And we can also send it out in the summary, correct, uh, Matt, when you send out the meeting summary? So there'll be an opportunity to get it out that way as well, to get started with, you know, getting the information out. Because I think people who filled out the survey are going to be interested in what the results were. I mean, I certainly would. So, I know, um, just looking through the chat, I know one of the questions was what started the survey, uh, what prompted the survey? And that was how many years ago? Three years ago? Um, four years ago, a young man came to a town meeting, uh, asking that 16, 17 year olds be able to vote. And, uh, we gave him some homework. Uh, I know council member Hill Zayet had offered to assist the young man. Um, he didn't really follow through with, uh, his part of the homework. But, uh, it was a, a kind of a nagging question because some other municipalities have allowed for 16 and 17 year olds to vote. And the, um, council decided, well, let's see what more people are, are, are thinking. We just felt it was necessary to get more information from people. Uh, and the, uh, additional question came from every time we have an election, you always have someone who lives in the town and says, I can't vote, but I own a home, I pay property tax. And, you know, this is my town. Why can't I vote? So that, that prompted adding the second question. So, um, so I, I really appreciate that, you know, close to 400 people responded to the survey. And I, I, I think that's a real success. Um, we don't do this, I can't remember ever receiving a survey, quite honestly. Not in a long time. And so, um, I think it's hard to get people engaged, especially on important questions. So I think, um, having people respond to the survey was really positive for us, um, in, in helping to be, um, your elected officials and, and hearing you. Cause we, you know, as I said, we got eight people, you know, on this meeting. And, um, so we, it's, it's good to get that kind of feedback. Um, so, uh, so again, I'm hearing that you, uh, Nate, you and Darren want to dig into the survey a little bit more with Alex and maybe come back to the next meeting with some recommendations?
Yep, that sounds good.
Yeah, if we, I mean, I, 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 I'm all in favor of trying to resolve this prior to the next election.
That's fine.
It's November and the election is in June. So, um, I guess I would, you know, Nate, if you're willing, I'd almost like to really scope out a, uh, charter revision at that point.
Yeah, but we can do, maybe dig around for what the right bar is to set, I think.
Right. And yeah, that's what I'm saying is I'd like to propose, or I'd like to, you know, start circulating a charter revision that, uh, reflects that bar.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, at, at the very latest, we would have to introduce something by February. Absolute latest. Okay. All right. So, um, is there any other questions from the audience? I'm not sure. I, I've seen chats, but I can't, it's. Okay, I just asked for comments. Uh, Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Furman. Um, wasn't sure if you were going to go to the base in attendance or not. Okay, great. Thank you, thank you. Um, you know, actually I thought that, uh, the response rate would be much higher than this. I, I was guessing that myself, that would be about 50%. So a 26% response rate, I think. Um, contrary to your view, Mayor Furman, is, is a disappointing result. And, um, we've had elections in which, um, in fact, in which sitting council members have, have amassed more than 500 votes. So there are ways of getting people to turn out and there are ways of getting people to, uh, to, um, participate in, in the elections. And I, and I think, um, this was a, um, uh, an expensive exercise. The town manager mentioned a couple of meetings ago that it would be about a thousand dollars to do this. And I just don't see that there's a whole great lot of demand for, um, you know, for these kinds of surveys. I think we could easily attach a question, this has been done in the past, I think, to the, uh, annual election in town, the ballot on the annual election with, you know, with essentially a referendum question. And it's, it would be cheaper. We, we have a potential of getting as many, if not more, in, in the way of turnouts. And, uh, I, I think it would be, uh, a good idea. Someone mentioned, uh, the idea of rerunning the poll. Why not rerun it, uh, at the next election in June and get a good Why not rerun it, uh, at the next election in June and get a good sense of what the town has to say at that time too? I mean, it's, um, uh, it would be more cost effective. It'd be more direct. And I think we'd attract more attention. So anyway, I, I kind of think that, um, a 26% response rate, we could have done better. And, um, I would like to see these data reported in, in, in detail in the, uh, uh, the town journal as well as on the town site, including the question wording. Because as you know, and as council members, I'm sure are aware, wording on the questions can, can really bring a, a sharp and major influence to how the polls are responded to. So the question wording is, 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 is vital. And pollsters will tell you that they can get almost any kind of response they want, depending on the how, how the question is worded. So that is something to be kept in mind. So I'd love to see, you know, a full report about the, uh, about the poll, including the question wording, uh, when, when this is published.
I, I agree. I think having the actual question, uh, before each result is a good idea.
I would just like to say that in my low point, I received 72 votes in an election. And, um, I've never taken that to diminish my self-importance. I mean, I still get a vote and, and, and elections, you know, are who turns out. And in that election, I got 72 votes and, you know, won. And so I, I, I think we need to stop focusing on the percentage turnout and say, was the process, you know, full? And, and I think this was more than we had to do. We could have just proposed a charter amendment and seen who show up for a town meeting. And we went above and beyond that and we got 390, which I, as I pointed out, we've never gotten at a single town meeting ever. And so I'm willing to read into the results and, and move forward from there.
Yeah, well, we've had, uh, council members who've scored more than 500 votes in, uh, in town elections. And, uh, 72 votes were in a, uh, in a uncontested election is, 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 you know, is, is really not much.
For council members, my vote with 72 votes counts as much as the other, because there's no better process here.
Nobody's disputing that. No one's arguing that. But I'm just saying 72 votes in an uncontested election is, it has nothing to brag about.
You keep talking about 500 and I'm saying, you know, it's, it's, elections are elections and they count. So just, you know, live with it. It's better than the alternative.
Well, I, the only comment I'd make on it is, I appreciate that we took the time to do it midterm. Because we didn't put it on about last June and we didn't want to wait all the way until next June. Because, you know, kind of trying to play down the middle of, of both of you, you know, like, Joe, we don't even know what's gonna, you know, we don't know if we're gonna have a contested or uncontested election this coming June, right? So, yes, we've had votes that have gotten five, 600, whatever the final count was of respondents. And that was amazing. We had contested council, we had contested mayoral, it was a perfect storm of, of activating voters. But if it ends up that we have a uncontested election, we might only have 72 people reply. And then that's.
71 Connor.
Dang it.
The, the point is, the point is not about the elections in town. So the point about it is how to get, uh, people to show an interest in, in this. And I'm saying that people have been using, uh, different metrics. And I'm saying that there's one great metric that shows that we can get a lot of people to vote in, in town in contested elections. That's all.
Yeah, I just phrase it slightly different to say, I think the process we did here of mailing out a survey helped us to get to 400. Whereas if we had just taken it up as a, an agenda item, we would have less than 400.
Okay, let's, uh, uh, I think we've got our marching orders, Nate and Darren. And, uh, I don't see any other hands or comments. So I think we will move on to, uh, council reports. If you have an individual report you would like to make, uh, I will start with Nate.
Okay, just two or three very, very quick things to, to announce. We're gonna, uh, maybe Matt will announce this, but we're gonna have a mobility committee meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks before the next council meeting. Also wanted to make a point that the ride on Route 4 route is be, is under consideration for expansion right now. It currently goes from Silver Spring and then basically does a U-turn around the mark, goes past the mark and then U-turn in Kensington and then back to Silver Spring. And they're considering to expand the access to continue on to the Wheaton Metro Station, which I would argue is a very, very good thing for connectivity between our two areas and increase mark ridership. So there's going to be a public hearing and I would just request to, to be able to give some public testimony on behalf of, of the council in favor of that expansion. And then I have one more point. I don't know if we need to discuss that.
All right, um, so I was just looking on the town website. Have we changed the title of the traffic committee to the mobility committee? Has that been officially changed? I just want to make sure there's no confusion about that.
There's been no formal change on staff side. I know when I, I sent the, the preliminary email to, uh, council member Angle and council member Hill Zayet, I kind of use both terms because we, we weren't sure yet.
It's tough to let go of old, old things.
Yeah, so. I, I, I don't have any, I don't really care. I just want to make sure that we're consistent that if the traffic committee is now the mobility committee, and I, I don't think.
We went with.
Committee's name is necessarily a, a council action, but I think we should introduce that the fact that the committee will now be called the mobility committee and we will change it on the website. So people know where to go to look for the information.
As of right now, our draft agenda says traffic mobility, uh, committee, TMC.
I know, just making the mobility committee, that's what we agreed to.
I thought it was gonna be the TPM GLN.
We're not making, making it more complicated.
Okay, so are we officially changing the traffic committee to the mobility committee? Is that what I'm hearing? Yes?
I think the answer is yes.
Okay, is there any objection from the other two council members to changing the, it preference?
No.
I'm, I'm not hearing any. So can, on the website, can we please change traffic to the mobility committee? So you could put in parentheses was. I don't think we need that, but I, I just want, I, I, people are going to be looking for the mobility community, committee and not being able to find it. So that's my point. Okay, I'm sorry Nate, I interrupted you.
No, 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 that's okay. And I should have just, I should have mentioned in the context of that, um, the ride on expansion, the date is December 7th. Tuesday, December 7th. So I'm willing to provide testimony, um, just my own opinion, or I'm happy to do it on behalf of the town. Um, but I encourage others that are people who use public transit or wants the expansion of service to connect Kensington to other areas, I suggest, you know, participate and submit comments. You can do, you can, you can testify, like most of these things, you can testify or provide written comments.
Okay. Well, the traffic committee, will they have, uh, they probably wouldn't have met, won't met before the 7th, is that correct?
Um, no, we won't have met.
Sorry, the mobility committee? Already messing it up.
I could just walk down the street and talk to Nate. It's fine.
Well, I just, I, I, I mean, if you're gonna do testimony on behalf of the town, it is helpful to just at least give your, um, you know, a draft of the testimony to the council, just so we know. Yeah. Okay. Okay, you know, in case you're asking, you know, the ride on bus to drive down Farragut Avenue or something, just so Darren has an opportunity to.
It was right by St. Paul Park.
Yeah, there you go.
Great. So I'll send that around. And then last thing is just on a very high note, we have a new working group co-chair of the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group of the mobility committee. Chris Zappi has agreed to be co-chair. Um, and I also, he's not here, but I also just wanted to say a huge congratulations to him because he was just appointed to be a, um, a member of the Washington Suburban Transit Commission. So he just got that appointment from the county. Um, and he'll also serve, uh, on the working group as co-chair. He's been involved from the beginning, but he's gonna step up and.
So he, he won't have any conflict issues?
No, I asked him, he doesn't, he doesn't perceive any conflict.
Okay, good. Okay.
That's it for me. Thank you.
All right. Bridgette, anything on the mobility committee or?
Not on mobility, but, um, I did have a little update. Um, totally, um, the, uh, very scared, I'm gonna wake her up right now. Um, Brian Tomes, who I had mentioned earlier, who was looking for a kidney, got his kidney.
Oh, good.
Yeah, he had that transplant and he's doing great. So I just wanted to let people know. Um, he got it through a chain. So one person donates and it keeps going. Especially if you can't donate to the person you want to. So, um, those things are amazing and work. So if you're inclined to get tested, because even if the person you're trying to help can't take your kidney, somebody else can.
Oh, nice. Okay, thank you. Uh, Connor?
Only one, I've talked enough about Thrive, I think, uh, but somebody else is talking about Thrive. And that is, uh, the Wheaton Urban District has a meeting that is open to the public tomorrow night. It's at 6:30. Um, it, I just did it. So if you Google Wheaton Urban District, you can find the website and they'll provide a, I believe it's a Zoom link. Where they will talk Thrive and looking at the agenda, it looks like Gwen Wright, Director of Montgomery County Planning Staff is, uh, is slated to be a part of that presentation. So it's another area and opportunity to hear, uh, about Thrive. Biggest thing I can say is, you know, when the journal comes out in the next days to weeks, please read, there's some stuff in there about Thrive and attainable housing, um, and let us know if you have any questions.
Okay, I'm hoping people will have the printed journal in the mail this week. Um, of course, I don't control the US mail, but I'm, it should be in their hands this week. And of course, the electronic version is available online. So if you are anxious to read about attainable housing or Thrive, um, Darren's op ed from the Bethesda Magazine, um, please, you know, you can read it online. You don't have to wait for the electron, or to the printed version. Uh, Connor, one thing I wanted to check with you, there's also a Thrive Coalition meeting. I was, didn't know whether you wanted to go to one and I could go to the other.
I think that would be smart. You get to pick which one you want to be a part of.
You want to do the mid-county just because that's kind of new information. I think probably the, um, the other thrive would probably be just maybe some rehashing, so.
Yep, sounds great. So I'll do the Wheaton one.
Right. Okay, good. Uh, Darren, anything?
Yeah, just to continue the thrive theme, I would say that, you know, if, if you've read what I wrote in the Bethesda Magazine, you see that I, I questioned some of the, um, principles underlying Thrive. And, you know, if we can't obtain some provisions at the county level, we're going to be looking at what we can, uh, do at the, um, municipality le- level. And so if anybody has thoughts about how we can, um, you know, exert control and, and influence over the, you know, densification of housing in our town, I, I'd be more than happy to sort of, uh, you know, add that to our learning. I, I don't know where we're going with it, but I, I, I would certainly support, um, you know, making sure that Kensington has a, a, a different level of review of these than it's currently been given at the county level.
Okay, great, thank you. And, um, I would like to, um, and I don't have much to report, uh, this month, but I, I would like to remind everybody about, um, upcoming events, which is also on page 11 in your journal. Uh, but we have the, we had the dog parade coming up on, uh, this Saturday. And, uh, that is sponsored by the town and McInerney, uh, Real Estate. So, um, just be sure if you've got a dog and you want to participate, that starts at Flynn Park at 10 o'clock.
Now, Tracy, do you have to have a dog to attend?
You do not have to have a dog. You could bring your stuffed dog and Ifa could have her picture taken with her, with her little stuffed dog. So.
Asking for a friend.
Yes, so please bring, bring, uh, bring the kids. It'll be fun. Uh, and then of course we have the, uh, Nighthawks, uh, this dance, Thanksgiving dance will be at town hall on the 24th. And then the menorah lighting on the 28th of November. So I hope you all have those on your calendars, uh, council members, and that you will, uh, you may not be wanting to dance all night with the Nighthawks, but, uh, please come to the, um, dog parade and the menorah lighting if you, if you're available. So, and then there's tons of December events too, and I won't bore everybody with those, but they're in the journal and I hope everybody will take advantage of these, uh, great events that the town puts on. So, um, all right, so let's move on to, uh, the town manager and staff. Matt, Susan, you have anything you need to?
Just, uh, remind residents that, uh, leaf collection started today. Uh, we'll be running through Friday, December 10th. Um, so please place your cur-, uh, leaves to the curb and, uh, the public works crew will be around again.
Yeah, and we choose not to do a schedule. I know we've tried that in the past, but the crew prefers to just be able to hit, you know, the neighborhoods. Uh, certainly if you think your leaves have been sitting out there too long, you can call, but, um, the, it worked very well last year. So I'm pretty pleased with, um, um, and the crew works really hard during leaf season. So I hope everybody appreciates, this is not an easy job to, uh, to be doing. So.
I also know that there are occasional, um, movements to ban gas-powered leaf blowers. While our, our staff is collecting the leaves, uh, it, it is an incredibly orchestrated, choreographed event to watch them move these leaves into the street and suck them up. And so just please do that to appreciate that, that, you know, I don't think we can get that power from batteries. And, and this is the time of year when, when the use is most significant. So, so consider that.
Okay, all right, thank you. And, uh, you always have the option to bag your leaves as well. So, um, but, uh, but if you can get them to the curb, that'd be great. All right, so let's go down to ordinances, resolutions, and, oh, I'm sorry, public appearances. Sorry, forgot all about that one. Is there anyone? Jack, get your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd just like to comment, I think the name change, uh, to the mobility committee is a bad idea because it adds unnecessary confusion. People gotta look and say, mobility committee, what the heck is that? Traffic Mobility Committee is a, is a much better choice.
Okay, thank you, Jack. I'm sorry, I missed that, uh, your hand on that earlier conversation.
Yeah, I was gonna reject that. I didn't know.
Okay.
I wasn't fast enough. I like, I just like to say a few words that the gentleman who passed away recently, you mentioned.
Carl? I'm sorry, what was his last name?
Porter.
Porter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
He was a friend, he was an interesting guy. He knew a lot about all kinds of things. I had, yeah, a number of wonderful conversations with him. I just got an email from Ellie, who says there will be a memorial service this, this Saturday, November 13th, from 2 to 5 PM, at the Veterans of Foreign Wars Hall in Wheaton. Uh, address 11,00316 Fern Street, Wheaton.
All right, well, it'd be nice if she sent that out on the listserv.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
I, I just forwarded it to you.
Oh, good. All right. Well, thank you, Jack, because I couldn't write down fast enough. So thank.
I, 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 I put it in a, in a comment too.
Oh, good. Okay.
And, and lastly, a couple of astronomical announcements. Next week, the, the Leonid meteor shower peaks in the evening of the 17th into the morning of the 18th with about 15 meteors per hour. Unfortunately, the nearly full moon will be cause less than ideal viewing conditions. Next, um, the next night, the November 19th, there will be a partial lunar eclipse. Although they, they call it partial, it, only a, a small sliver of the moon will not pass into the shadow of the earth, the umbra. It'll be what, 95, 97%? The eclipse begins when the first part of the moon enters the Earth's panumbras at 1:02 AM and it will, it will peak. I guess, um, I guess it will peak about 3:00 and it will end it at 7:03 AM, just at sunrise.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Jack, or, uh, Joe?
Thanks, Mayor Furman. Um, um, I, I was wondering if Connor Crimmens, uh, had any further, um, details on the latest on Thrive? I mean, he gave a fairly ominous report last month and, uh, it was kind of. was kind of half expecting some further details this month about where things stand because the county council seemed to be, at least according to the council member, moving pretty rapidly on this and is that still the case or where do things stand?
So I want to very intentionally separate thrive and attainable housing and talk about them separately, but as succinctly as I can on thrive. Thrive has been transmitted to the council for the council to review and start to talk about. What I will say is, just recently, you know, we had a chance to speak with council member Alvernaus, who's an at-large, but he, you know, is within the Kensington area. He lives over by Summit and he expressed only his personal views, which was that he thinks really the council needs to take a look at slowing it down and moving it back a little bit, that there are areas of concern that he has heard through the town, our coalition and other groups across the county that, you know, there while there may have been a number of events, the true totality of, of all of the of participation really hasn't been open and accessible to everybody as, as the council would like to. It needs to be more representative of a few other jurisdictions and populations, but also that the plan is missing some critical high target things like metrics and, and trying to explain and the difference between, you know, define affordable versus attainable and what are the goals that the county is trying to achieve with thrive. So well, he is only one member. You know, if this slows down, he does become president of the council in January. He has a little more say over the calendaring it, but you know, his personal belief is just, it has moved very rapidly and it could use more discussion. Will it go back for a full rewrite? No, because I, and I'll be the first to say, there's, there are good things in thrive. There are some really good aspirational things, but there are also some things that are without greater definition, without, you know, greater detail and without understanding what it is we are attempting to achieve, i.e. what are the goals that we are reaching for and what are the metrics that we're going to measure whether or not we are attaining those goals? Then I just wonder, you know, okay, what is the purpose of thrive? It needs to, I know it's a visionary document, but it needs to help lay out what we're trying to achieve. Now, that is separate and distinct from the attainable housing strategy. So thrive is the big general plan. Another thing that, that, you know, council member Alvernaus, but others that we've spoken to also, you know, one of the things that a lot of communities, and it's not just Kensington and the west side or the east side, you know, civic associations and communities across Silver Spring and other unincorporated parts, you know, their big thing is a one-size-fits-all approach, like a ZTA zoning text amendment, is not in the best interest of the county, that there, the needs of individual communities are very different north to south and east to west. And so to take an application approach by virtue of ZTA versus taking a planned use approach through sector planning, like they've done in the past, is is problematic. And I share this thought. I think, you know, what is good for Kensington as far as density and upzoning and, and 15-minute living is going to be very different from places like, you know, Burtonsville and places like Poolsville, and yet still very different from places like Bethesda and Silver Spring that are larger urban districts. And so a, a one-size-fits-all approach, it does not make sense to me. And I do think the sector planning process is something that is very important to ensuring that the application of these you know, development goals is more localized to the individual communities that we're trying to affect. I'm going to pause in case you had a thought or a question on that, Joe.
I, maybe a little clarification request. I thought that the attainable housing was a central element of of this thrive initiative.
Yeah, so this is where some of the things have shifted over time. Initially, the thought with thrive was thrive is going to help drive affordable housing. And then, as a, you know, more digging and research and writing and, and, you know, the reality was affordable housing has specific metrics. It's based on income level and it's based on the percentage of your income level that is used to pay for housing with 30% being that, that number. And so what they realized is our area in general, but certainly down county and along the red line, you know, transit lines, the land value there is, it's expensive. And those corridors where they want to see the density and the upzoning is the most expensive land in the county. And as a result, when you factor in the acquisition cost for that land, plus demolition, if there's an existing property, then the planning process, then the building process, they, there's no way to achieve affordable housing without government intervention. So right now, the county has one lever, which is the moderately priced dwelling unit program, MPDUs, where they require developers of new developments to reserve a certain percentage of their units for moderately priced dwelling units tied to income levels. That's great, but it's not going to naturally create affordable housing. And so that's where the shift in verbiage has gone from affordable housing to attainable housing. But one, one minor thing is there isn't really a, a clear and distinct definition of by the county of what they consider what is attainable housing, other than the way they've spoken about it, which has been, well, it's any unit of housing at a price point that is less than the going rate for a single-family home around it. So if the going rate for a single-family home, I'm going to use big round numbers, in Kensington is a million dollars, then anything under a million is attainable. And so building townhouses that are $800,000, $900,000, that fits in the attainable housing model. But it's not helping to achieve what we keep hearing people talk about, which is we need a distribution of housing across the price points, right, from million and million dollar and a half dollar houses to things in the 900s, 700s, but also we need to try and retain and, and create as much housing as we can, more in the $400,000 to $500,000 level. But the other thing that's not talked about is we talk simply in the terms of creating numbers of dwellings, dwelling units. But a dwelling unit could be 350 square feet. It can be, you know, 1,500 square feet. It, the number is just, we get credit because one dwelling unit or 10 dwelling units was created as opposed to trying to match what the county needs. And what the county keeps saying is, well, you know, the biggest need right now actually is housing at the lower end of the price point, but for families, two and three bedroom. Well, okay, if that's what we need, then we have to figure out how do we promote the creation of that specific type of housing? And then when you get into the attainable housing strategy, some of the things we're talking about are changing the by right development requirements so that on a, a piece of property in the R60, which is what Kensington is, where typically it's been a single-family home, you could create by right, a duplex, a triplex, and because we're in the priority housing district, a quadplex. So a, a structure that has four units of housing. But the chances of those units of housing being individually two and three-bedroom places that accommodate families, which would mean it would be a 12-bedroom place collectively, are very low. Well, we'll, you know, I think we will result in numbers of one unit and efficiency type units of housing, because the focus has been on units of housing as opposed to what is, what are the housing, what is the housing that the county needs? So I don't know if that, that helps to clarify.
Thank you, Councilmember Crimmins. Finally, Mayor Furman, very briefly, I just noticed recently the upgrades in the Clum Kennedy Park and they, they look great. They look terrific. I mean, they're, they're, they're small in the overall scope of things, but nonetheless, they're they're really very nice. I'm glad to see them.
Okay, thank you. They'll, they'll, it will get bigger. And we hope to add some color in the spring too, so right now.
What do you mean, get bigger?
Some of the, the plants will get a little bit larger. They're, you know, they're teeny tiny, so.
You mean, growth will come in the spring?
Growth will come in the spring, yes. So what you see, and they're, they're deer-proof, I've been told. So that's helpful. Anyway, all right, well, I don't see any additional hands, so let's move down to the ordinance resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Mayor, council, before you is resolution number R-18-2021. A resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington authorizing and ratifying compensation of Green Hill Locker. PLC attorneys and authorizing continued legal services is necessary. This is essentially paying our legal fees for the Pepco rate case.
Okay. Council, any questions? Okay, so any questions from the audience? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-18-2021.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. All right, number two?
Resolution R-19-2021 is a resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington authorizing the extension of the existing refuse and recycling contract with Ecology Services Refuse and Recycling LLC for the term of one year and increasing the number of units served with a per-unit price increase. We have, our existing contract had a three-year contract which ends on December 31st. Within the contract that was approved by the council in 2018, there's three one-year options. This is picking up the first-year option and the reference to the units, increased number of units is because the original contract did not include the annexation. So the new includes the annexation numbers. There is a two and a half percent increase for calendar year 2022 proposed within the initial contract, which was provided in 2018.
Okay. Council, any questions? Any comments from the, from the audience? I don't see anything.
Mayor Furman, I did. I guess I couldn't raise my hand quick enough. The town manager refers to the 2018 contract. I think this contract before we got to the current vendor was bid, is that correct? Is my memory correct on that?
I believe so. It was, was it affordable? What was the?
AA refuse.
AA refuse, yeah.
Was the awarding bid contractor. They no longer, they removed themselves from residential collections. The council back in 2018 agreed to take the second lowest bid that we received and we renegotiated those contract terms to allow for a three-year contract with three one-year renewals.
So this would not be due for bid until when then, this contract? Or could it be bid now? Could it have been bid this, this year? For next year? And, and it wasn't because, what, why wasn't it bid?
We have three one-year renewals. It's in the best interest of the town to pick up the renewal.
Okay, well, that was my question then. So after those three single-year renewals, this contract could be bid again?
Correct.
And is that the expectation, anticipation that it will be?
I mean, it's up to the council. I mean, we, we would have two other options after this year.
Well, more than likely, it would be in 2023 that we would probably, is that correct? Because they, is there, 2024 is when the would be the last one, is that right? Because we're 22, 23, 24. So in the year of 2024, we could put it out for bid then to pick up in 2025. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, I, of course, it's hard to anticipate what the council is going to be doing or even who's going to be on the council in three or four years, but I'm just wondering if the expectation is as of now to, to put this out for bid as it has been bid in the past, because as you know, Mayor Furman, my view, there's too many of these contracts that are being let by the town without bid process. And I don't think that's a very, very healthy or wise process.
Well, when you get a contract that allows you to do these one-year extensions, you know, by year, that means that, you know, you can either put it out for bid or you can pick up the one year. If you're satisfied with the, with the work and the price, then you continue on with the contract because
I understand that completely.
You didn't have to go in through to the bid process.
I understand that completely. My question though is not on the single-year renewals, but at the end of that three-year period, is it the likely expectation that this will be set out for bid?
I would say that it is. I would say it is likely that we would put it out for bid after that amount of time.
Thank you, Mayor Furman.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I can just go back one, I looked it up real quick. Tentatively, right now, the introduction of the zoning text amendment related to thrive as of right now is scheduled for the December 9th county council agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing to do with trash, but thank you. All right, you got that in there. All right, so, uh, let's see. Now you're making me lose my place. We're on number two. Okay, is there a motion to?
I'll move to to approve resolution 19, R-19-2021.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, number three, Matt?
Okay, my favorite resolution every year. Resolution R-20-2021. A resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington proclaiming November to be municipal government month in Kensington, Maryland. And this is for the Maryland Municipal League.
I, I'm ashamed to say I did not. I guess you're waiting for this resolution so we could put the flag up, is that correct?
Yes.
So the flag will be up tomorrow if we approve it, right? Okay, so, council, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Okay, I don't see any hands. Could I get a motion?
I would move to re-adopt resolution R-20-2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you very much. I believe that is the end of our agenda, so I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
You're just dying to get back to that baby, aren't you? Is there, I'm sorry, I missed a second. Nate, was that you?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much and we'll see you around town.